All right, we will call to order the September 19th, 2022 meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Kerry Callahan, the Chair of the Board. We have two items on our agenda this evening, or two new applications, rather, and would the Secretary put the agenda on the record, please?
Could the, Garrett, could you put up the official notice, please?
There we go.
Yeah.
The notice for the record, yes.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 7 o'clock PM on the following applications. Christopher McCag, application for special exception to expand non-conforming attached garage located at 106 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone. Two Corliss Archer Good application for variance to reduce front yard setback from 50 feet to 44 feet for garage expansion located at 261 Old Mountain Road, R80 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmington CT dot org backslash about hyphen Farmington backslash calendar hyphen meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at www.farmington CT dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals, or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, September 1, 2022.
Thank you. The first application is being made by Christopher, am I pronouncing it correctly, McCag?
Yes.
All right, Mr. McCag is with us, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order before the applicant speaks. There seems to be, I have a question on the, whether the application has been properly filled out. I don't see any request other than the box checking, special exception. I don't see any, anything on the application itself, what the applicant is seeking, or what we are acting upon. So I bring that to your attention before we begin, because I would have assumed that the application has to at least describe what it is they want to do in the application itself.
I agree, is that something the town staff has addressed?
It's not as necessary, it's not a, because it's a special exception, not a variance, they don't need a hardship or any of the other things you would normally require. And if the map that was included with the application shows the proposed expansion of the non-conforming structure, which is right here.
All right, it was just, it was just my inquiry, thank you.
Okay, that said, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that the footprint of the expanded garage is acceptable and can be built before I pursue any, you know, building plans or anything else. If, if I can't build anything more than the existing structure, then there's no sense in pursuing anything further on that end.
So, Chris, as you can see here, this is the existing homes, was an as-built survey that was done. The existing garage is shown here under the hash marks, it's 18 and a half by 18.2 feet. As you can see, the entire property is in front of the 40-foot front property setback for this zone. So the applicant is seeking to expand the existing garage from 18 and a half feet wide to 24 feet wide and 18.2 feet wide, or long to 22 feet long. They can, he can't go any further back due to the location of the septic tank for the building code separations. The existing house is, I think it was 19 feet, or the existing garage is 19 feet from the front property line, but it is now, will now be 16.6 feet from the front property line. But there's still enough space between the house and the road. I have the calculation in front of me. But if we look up here, so I had Mr. McKay provide some photos with his application, as you can see here, these cones right here. Let's do this.
Would represent the expanded garage?
Yeah, so the, yes, these cones right here in this line represent the front line of the proposed garage. And this set of cones right here represents the front property line. So there's still plenty of room between the front property line and the street. That does not appear that it would cause any concern with it if there was ever to be a sidewalk or anything like that in the area. Because while the home is close to the front property line, the buildings are set further back from the road, it's a wider right of way.
All right. Anything further, Mr. McKay?
No, I think that's about it, I just want to verify that I can build something larger before I go planning a larger structure.
Any questions from members of the board?
Would you like me to run down the list?
If we could do it in order, please.
Yes, Commissioner Marsh, any questions?
Oh, I noticed that those back cones are right up almost against the building behind that. I was just wondering how access to the garage is going to be because of this.
So these cones mark right here, mark the front line of the proposed new garage. These cones right here are the front property line, so they would utilize the existing driveway, and then the doors would be here. It's wide enough for a two-car garage, but probably be a single door, I would assume.
It would be two 9x7 garage doors.
But again, these cones are almost against this building.
Well, it's only two, it's only just under three feet further forward towards the road that the larger structure would be.
The, the existing structure would be demolished, is that your question, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the structure would never make.
Then my point is mute.
It would just be, it would just be a larger garage that is 24 feet wide by 22 feet deep, and the existing structure would be gone. It would be a replacement.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
Commissioner Nadeem?
No questions.
Commissioner Cloud?
No questions.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Um, this, this question is for staff, can you explain why this house or this structure is under a special exception rather than a variance if the request is to have the front of the garage be closer to the road than is allowed by current zoning in that neighborhood?
Because the entire, almost the entire structure, I believe there's a, there's a port addition off the back, but almost the entire structure is located in front of the front property line setback, as it probably, it predates that zoning regulation or zoning regulations as a whole. So this is similar to an application you had a couple months ago on Railroad Avenue, where all the homes were beyond the front yard setback. And it's an expansion of this non-conforming. It's not, it doesn't necessarily need a hardship, because it wouldn't be unique to this property, because the house right next door is located almost in line with this house in terms of proximity to the front property line and the front yard setback. So it wouldn't necessarily meet the criteria of a hardship that's unique to the property, but it is a non-conforming structure that is sought to be expanded upon. It's not an intensification, which is limited by state statute, expansion is allowed, and it's identified in the regulations, this power, not your regulations, I'm sorry, the plan and zoning regulations, that this power is delegated to the ZBA for expansion of non-performing. Is that your question, Tom?
That, that was my question, and this next question is for Mr. McCag. And have you sought out input from your next-door neighbor to the, I guess that would be, well, as you face your house to the left there?
As I face my house to the left?
Yeah, as the, your neighbor, I can't remember if,
If to the west?
Let out goes east, or well, it's north-south, right, or no?
East-west.
I have, I have. Sorry.
This is the, this is Mr. McKay's property, this is the property to the, the west, and this is the property to the east.
I've, I've spoken to Matt Yards at 100, and he has no opposition to it, and I have mentioned it to Jerry O'Clair at 114, and he has said nothing opposing it.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And lastly, Chairman Callahan?
Having looked at the pictures that were submitted with the package, the house looks like it's, it's kind of getting worn in places, is, is the garage the part of a larger plan for the rehabilitation of the overall structures on the property?
Not any enlargement of it, but improvement of it, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
All right, I don't have any more questions.
All right, that was everyone.
All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak further in support of the applicant? If so, raise your hand using the, the function on Zoom. Similarly, is there anybody who wishes to speak against the applicant? If so, let us know via the Zoom function. Hearing nothing from any further, hearing nothing further from any members of the public, I will seek any comments from the members of the board in the same order in which we ask questions, Garrett?
Certainly, Commissioner Marsh, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Walsh?
No comment.
Commissioner Nadeem?
No comment.
Commissioner Cloud?
We wish you good luck.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
No comment.
And Chairman Callahan?
Nothing further. I believe that closes the hearing with regard to the first application on this evening's agenda. And I, I'm sorry if I'm being absent-minded for a moment, were we voting, I think we've been voting generally on each item as it comes up?
Correct.
Okay, in that case, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the special exception as to to expand the non-conforming attached garage located at 106 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone, as per the application and documents submitted with the application.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Do you do a roll call for Chairman Callahan?
Please.
All right, Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Nadeem?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenhorn?
Aye.
And Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously, good luck, Mr. McKay.
Thank you very much.
The second item on our agenda is the application of Corliss Archer Good for the variance to reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet to 44 feet for a garage expansion located at 261 Mountain Road, R80 Zone. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, yes, this is Corliss Archer Good. I detailed in the application my request to add in addition to my current two-car garage. And I was requesting to add it towards the front of the house due to restrictions with sewer lines and drains that are located behind.
Okay.
So the applicant is seeking to expand the existing two-car garage to add a third bay at the front of the property. The front property line setback in this zone is 50 feet, which, as you can see here, the house is 60 or 58 feet, I'm sorry, 58 feet from the front property line. So due to, and due to the angle of the house, it's just a small corner of the proposed garage is, requires a variance. I believe it was 30 square feet. So out of, out of the total garage, it's only 30 square feet that would be encroaching on the front yard setback. The septic tank is located through the property. There's a curtain drain that runs along the side of the driveway, behind the house, and down out the back, and I believe there's a pool here, and there's a deck along the back of the house. Again, this is the same part issue where you've got a septic tank in close proximity to the house for the existing home, which meets the code, however, any expansion would limit where the garage would be located, so they're just seeking to add the garage to the front of the house. This driveway was proposed, it's actually a little larger. I can show you on the aerial photo right here, it's a lot more obvious, so the garage could be added here. And there's plenty of garage that wouldn't require very much changes to the existing garage. Again, the house is at an angle to the street, which necessitates this small area requiring a variance.
Anything further from the applicant?
No, nothing further, thank you.
All right, I will open it up to questions from the members of the board in the same order that we have been using.
Commissioner Marsh, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Walsh, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Nadeem, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cloud?
Do we have images of the actual structure, not just the, the overhead, can we see with that?
Oh, let me see, so I don't have, we don't have a mock-up of, of any architectural or anything, but yeah, that's moving with that picture. So here's the existing garage, it's a two-bay garage. I couldn't get out and walk around Old Mountain Road and take a picture, but the, the peak of the roof runs perpendicular or parallel to the face of the garage, so the roof will continue, and they'll have to match the existing style of the garage as part of the construction.
So it just would be coming out?
Correct, yeah, where these shrubs are.
Okay. Is that a? No further question, yes.
All right, Mr. Schoenhorn?
No questions.
And Chairman Callahan?
Is there a particular reason, and I'm addressing this to the issue of hardship, as to why you believe that it creates a hardship if you are not allowed to build a third bay on the garage?
And you're, you're asking me, the applicant, correct?
Well, I'm asking you kind of what's the reason, what's the hardship? Or what, I'll, I'll address it, what do you, what, just tell us if you would, please, what is the need for a third bay on the garage?
So I, I have more than two vehicles. And in the wintertime, having the additional vehicles outside causes more wear to the vehicle, and it would be helpful to be able to place the vehicle inside of a garage.
Understood, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
All right.
I have a question.
Is that you here?
It's you, Harry.
Go ahead, Harry.
Thank you. I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, where are the car, the car going into the garage?
So this was, this was the proposed driveway, the driveway was instructed at the time. I'll scroll down to the aerial photo, which shows that the driveway was larger than originally presented. So there is still enough space for a car to come around and turn into the, into the garage that would be located here. Yeah, let me.
Aren't we getting a little close to Old Mountain Road?
So here's the outline of the existing driveway. And that would be, again, this is not the scale, because I'm just drawing it on the computer, that's probably too big.
I'm just saying.
Way too big.
Are we getting the property out close or Old Mountain Road?
Only a little bit, so again, the property is set behind the setback. So it's only looking for a six-foot, I think it was six feet, reduction for a, for this corner of the garage to project into the front yard setback.
And if you'll excuse me, but where are the other entrances to the other two garages?
They're over here. So the, yeah, it's a side-load garage, it's not a drive-in. There's not a pole, it's a side-load, so the third would be right there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak against the application? Hearing nothing from any other members of the public, I will shift to comments from the members of the board in the same order as that, that in which we asked our questions, Garrett?
All right, Commissioner Marsh, any, any comments?
I'm thinking. Oh. I'm a little bit not sure, so go to somebody else, please.
All right, Commissioner Walsh?
No questions or comments.
All right, Commissioner Nadeem?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cloud?
Actually, I have a question for the applicant, I'm just curious. How was your experience in filling this out? Was this a difficult process for you, was it clear and enjoyable, or was this a? Just tell me about your experience in this process, I'm just curious as a member of the board.
Hold on one second, Chris, her, her phone cut off, she just called back in, can you re-ask your question?
Sure, this is to the applicant, Corliss, I wanted to know, I, I was interested in knowing what your experience in this process has been like, was this an easy process to undertake, was it challenging or difficult in any way? Or any lessons that we can learn from your participation in this process?
So Garrett was very helpful in assisting me with filling out the application, so that helped tremendously, and so I felt the process so far, you know, was straightforward.
Great, thank you for that feedback, this is my first year serving, I'm just curious, we're, we're dealing with fellow residents, we want to make sure that we're providing the best service and opportunity for you to go through this process, so thank you for that candid remark.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Well, I'll just note that Commissioner Cloud's question, I was wondering whether it might have been more apropos after we voted, but I appreciate him having asked that question, but I'm, I'm just going to comment that, you know, I drove by, I actually drive by on my way home almost every day because of the contours of the, of the land, not just the location of the drainage and septic, but even the front is very steep coming down from Old Mountain Road, so although the, the reason for the third garage, as Commissioner Callahan pointed out, is, is, is not a strong reason as a hardship, I do agree, though, that the contours of the land are such that it would be appropriate to, to find a hardship based on that more so than on the need for a third garage.
Right.
All right, and lastly, Chairman Callahan?
And I agree, and that's why I asked that question, and I think it might be all the, although the issues are somewhat distinguishable, I think this, my view anyway of this application would be significantly different if it wasn't such a small encroachment. But I think, given the size of the encroachment and the angle and the configuration of the lot, that this is an application that I can in good conscience support.
All right.
All the members of the commission having had an opportunity to comment, may I have a motion, please?
All right, I'll do it again, because everyone's shy tonight, so I make a motion to approve the application for variance to reduce front yard setback from 50 feet to 44 feet for a garage expansion located at 261 Old Mountain Road in an R80 Zone, as per application and map submitted with, to the commission, to the town planning and zoning.
And I will second that motion myself. Everybody having had an opportunity for questions and comments, if we may vote by roll call, as with the first application, please.
All right, Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Marsh? All right, Commissioner Nadeem?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
And Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous.
Passes, all right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next and last item on our agenda, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of the August 1st meeting?
Yes, and I noted a, there's a error, there's a missing word that I think is important enough that we should amend. At your convenience, I'll indicate, Mr. Chairman, where that is.
Please do, where is it?
In the, under the inspired by opportunity description, in the fifth line down, the line that begins with the words same location, after the comma, it says, but the existing only driveway, I think it should say the existing exit-only driveway.
I think you're right, I didn't notice it. But the existing.
Actually, it should just be the exiting only driveway.
Oh, yes, of course, yes, you're absolutely right, so.
The driveway will now be, okay.
Right, because it's not existing, you're absolutely right.
Okay, that's why, that's what you're, now I see, exiting, so, so is your motion, Commissioner Schoenhorn, to approve the minutes with the amendment that the word existing in line five of the minutes regarding the application of Inspired by Opportunity LLC, that the word existing be changed to the word exiting?
Well, actually, I think the word exit makes more sense here, because the, on the previous line, it's the existing entrance, this is entrance and exit, so.
But the exit only, I think it makes more sense, too.
Right. So that's my proposed.
All right. And I have no problem with that proposed amendment, it's not even an amendment, I think it's just a correction. Do we have a motion, though? Do we have?
We need a second.
Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you, Sarah, all right. I don't think we need to vote by roll call on the approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
No, it passes unanimously. No, it passes unanimously.
And motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I believe that's, we have covered the agenda. If I may have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you for participating, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.